Tabitha, he gave me thumbs up that he was ready back there.
We're going to call to order tonight's regular city commission meeting for September 16th, 2024. Tabitha, can we have a roll call?
You're good to go. You're good to go. Sorry.
I'm good to go?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to call to order tonight's regular city commission meeting for September 16th, 2024. Tabitha, can we have a roll call, please? I am present via Teams.
Here.
Commissioner Skirbner?
Here.
Commissioner Litchman?
Here.
And Commissioner Wilkerson?
Present.
For invocation tonight, we should have passed for Stan Martin from First Presbyterian Church?
We should have a picture.
Or not.
That's what we talked about.
Cardboard cut out.
Yeah. Okay, let's pray. Gracious God, we do ask your blessing on this meeting here this evening and those who are called to lead this community of El Dorado, the place in which we all live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not simply ask the question of how do we fix this, but to also ask how do we, what do we need to learn and what might we need to change and to whom do we need to listen? And remind them and all of us that because we, well, we forget sometimes, especially in what can be the noisiness of what passes for political debate these days, that they are not only leaders, but they are servants. And that it is all of our responsibility to serve the common good for all. And remind them and all of us that no matter where we live, everyone, long timers, short timers, the loud or the soft spoken, black, white, Hispanic, Asian, Christian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, atheists, they are our neighbors, they are our siblings, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and to protect who are the least of those among us. That is our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers who are in our midst, those who are on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. And grant all of us, especially this body, the wisdom and the courage to know what to do what is right and to what is good and what is true. And may they and we speak out when it's time to speak out, but also to listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. And may they and we always be guided, oh God, by your Spirit, your Spirit of community, your Spirit of justice, and your Spirit of love. And this we pray, oh God, in your name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, could everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance
To your flag
of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, law. That was, that was, that was a little awkward. So we have a couple of proclamations tonight, and I think Commissioner Wilkinson is going to take care of our proclamations.
We're going to let the vice mayor read the first one, and Commissioner Wilkinson will read the second one.
Commissioner Litchman, please.
Yes, sir. We have a proclamation from the city of El Dorado, Kansas, whereas El Dorado, Kansas has a rich history and vibrant community, and whereas Walnut River Brewing Company attracts significant tourism to El Dorado from around the state of Kansas and across fixed on the 16th day of September, 2024.
Thank you, Leon. Commissioner Wilkinson?
I asked the mayor if I could read this proclamation. My great grandmother, Ella McClung Childs, was one of the founding members of the Susan French Putney D.A.R. chapter here in El Dorado. And so I thought it would be nice if her great granddaughter could read this. Whereas our founding fathers, to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America. And whereas it is of the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution to support, preserve, and defend it against encroachment. And whereas the 237th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution provides an historic opportunity for all Americans to realize the achievements of the framers of the Constitution and the rights, privileges, and responsibilities it affords. And whereas the independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week, September 17th through September 23rd, as designated by proclamation of the United States of America in accordance with public law 915. Now therefore, I, Kenver Wilkinson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as commissioner of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of El Dorado, and urge all citizens to pay special attention during that week to our federal Constitution and the advantages of American citizenship. It is witness thereof, I heretofore set my hand and caused the official seal of the city of El Dorado to be affixed on the 16th day of September, 2024. Sharon Decker, another member of the D.A.R. has a few comments she would like to make.
Mayor Young and El Dorado City Commissioners, thank you for allowing me time for me to speak about Constitution Week. My name is Sharon Decker. I represent the Susanna French Putney chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. The El Dorado chapter includes El Dorado and Augusta and many members in the area. Tomorrow, September 17th, is the beginning of Constitution Week, which ends on September 23rd. This week has been celebrated annually since 1955, when D.A.R. petitioned Congress to dedicate the week as Constitution Week in honor of the signing of the United States Constitution, and to give recognition to all those who have become United States citizens, whether by birth or naturalization. The resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. On September 17th, 1787, at 4:00 PM Eastern Standard Time, the Constitution was signed and ratified. Bells Across America has been celebrated yearly nationwide to honor this event. To celebrate the beginning of the week, tomorrow, on Tuesday, September 17th, our chapter will be hosting a ceremony in front of the Butler County Courthouse. We will gather at 2:15. A number of community groups will be represented. The ceremony will begin with a short description of the history of Bells Across America, a dedication of the preamble to the Constitution plaque installed on the Lady Liberty statue, which was a project of Eagle Scout Gabriel Hammel, the ringing of the bells at 3:00, and culminating in the recitation of the preamble to the Constitution. All are welcome to attend the ceremony. Please bring your bells. If you're not able to attend, we urge you to ring your bells at home or work for one minute beginning at 3:00 to help usher in this important week. Again, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. It was, Commissioner Wilkinson, I appreciate you reading that proclamation. It was tough for me to not be there for that. It's something I've really enjoyed getting the opportunity to do each year, so thank you for taking that on this year. We also have, I think, in the audience, Ben from the brewery, who had something he'd like to say in regards to the proclamation as well. Ben, if you could come forward, I'd appreciate that.
Sure. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for your time. I really and truly believe we have a hidden gem here in El Dorado, and that's Rick Gearing of Walnut River Brewing Company. He's one of those people that will not seek recognition on his own. We don't ever apply for like the Great American Beer Festival, or we don't, we don't seek like medals and things of that nature. And he's just really great at making beer. And the city of El Dorado and the tourism that is brought in has been blessed because of it. And he's chosen El Dorado both for his vocation and for his home. He grew up in Wichita. But he's chosen El Dorado. It's a place he wants to live and work. And I know he would be very embarrassed to have a Rick Gearing Day, but I thought it'd be a lot of fun if we could have a War Beard Day. And so to honor Rick and his contributions to the community as well as contributions that the brewery makes through various charitable donations across Butler County and Sedgwick County and all over, we just thought it'd be fun to celebrate and have a War Beard Day here in El Dorado. So thank you for your time, for the proclamation, and cheers, everybody.
Cheers to you, too. Thank you.
Cheers, Ben. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Emerald Ashlock at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Tabitha, do we have any personal appearances tonight? Okay. Public comments. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding any matter that is under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters, matters pending in court, and land use matters are not permitted, because land use public hearings are held during planning commission meetings. Do we have anyone here tonight who would like to make public comment? Believe that we do.
Good evening.
Oh, Jeremy?
Yeah, hello, Bill.
We did it in a work session. It scared us every time.
Good evening. I'm Jeremy Sungren. This is Patrick Todd. We are here this evening to propose beginning discussions about a private-public partnership to bring an aquatic facility to the city of El Dorado. It's my understanding that there might be some funds in, either in the works or in discussions for the 2025 budget to maybe begin somewhat of a conversation towards that. I would propose that we either expedite that process or allow those funds to be used now, or if that isn't a possibility, I would propose that the commission would allow myself and Patrick, through discussions with city staff, to expediate it and use private dollars to look towards maybe an RFQ to start that process.
And my understanding, Jeremy, is that you want to do that because the swim team's going to be hosting a fairly big meet in a couple of years, and you'd like to have that as the, which is what is leading towards the?
Yeah, I would like to expedite the process because the El Dorado swim team does have, they, El Dorado will host their league championships in both 2025 and 2026. So in my mind, I had an aggressive goal to try to accomplish something by summer of 2026, which I think will be difficult. But the only way we would have any opportunity to meet that goal of mine would be to start now.
Sure.
Question, Jeremy?
Yes.
Patrick, whoever wants to answer. In very few words, give me the two options again.
So I guess option one, number one would be you allow private funds to handle pursuing an RFQ now. Option number two would be you take those funds that I'm, my understanding is you've allocated in the budget for 2025 to be utilized now. Maybe a third option would be a combination of both.
Now, is this something we have to look into, or do we need to further discuss it at a work session to make a decision, or can we do something tonight?
Well, as I get ready to present the 2025 proposed budget, there is funds set aside for part planning that could be used
Part planning.
For this specific thing. So those are the funds that Mr. Sungren is referring to. That could be moved forward to 2024 if the commission is actually do so, so we can start that process now, because again, those funds are earmarked for 2025. But we do have sufficient funds available today that we can actually bring up and make available for this if the commission wants to.
So how many dollars are we talking about?
We have $50,000 budgeted for part planning for 2025.
I mean, I, I guess I see it as a good idea, community involvement as well as city involvement.
I think Bill has something you would like to say.
Okay. Jump in, Bill.
I didn't want to just start talking and have you all freak out again, so. So I think the opportunity, I appreciate you guys coming and talking about this tonight. I think the opportunity for a public-private venture is critical as we look at this type of project. As we all know, we've had some success in the past with these public-private partnerships and these, as a vehicle to get some big things accomplished in El Dorado. So I'm in favor of certainly of moving forward with a planning and exploratory piece of this. I mean, obviously, we don't have money set aside to pay for a new aquatic center today, nor is that the expectation, I think, Jeremy and Patrick, from you guys. I think the opportunity to move forward and see what this is going to take to make it happen is something that I would be in favor of if, you know, if, if the rest of the commission is also on board with that. So that's, that's my two cents. I appreciate you guys presenting this, and I appreciate you presenting it in the manner of a public-private venture, as opposed to just saying the city needs to figure it out. Because that's, we've all got to work together to get this figured out, so.
I agree as well. I like the partnership idea. And you got to get started somewhere, and it's not getting any cheaper. And our pool's not getting any younger, unfortunately.
So do we need?
Well, but this is just public comments in terms of we can't take any action right now anyway, right?
Right. Right. So during, during public comment, we don't take action during public comment. What we'll do potentially later in the meeting during commission comments or at a work session, very soon, we'll take this up, guys, and get back to you as to what the decision is made. But for our policy, we don't take action during public comment.
Bill, could we take action in new business tonight and make some kind of motion where we allow the commission to designate a representative to sit on this kind of exploratory committee so that they can start meeting and moving forward? And then as they come up with things that need to be discussed further, those could be done in a work session?
We can do, I mean, generally speaking, I would say yes, we can take action later tonight. I would, I would recommend that we do it during conversation, during commission comments and updates, because the agenda itself is set for new business, and I don't want to introduce something on new business without modifying the agenda. But to your, to your question, Commissioner Skirbner, we can, we can, we can take care of it tonight.
Okay.
If that's the will of the commission, we certainly can take care of it tonight, and we'll have a response, we'll direct David to get a response back to Jeremy and Patrick after the meeting.
I appreciate that, and I like, you know, moving as quickly as possible to give us some leeway to, if your direction is that private dollars need to cover that RFQ, as soon as we know that, then we can get that accomplished. Also, I like the idea of someone on the commission being involved directly with what I see as a committee, so to speak. I would also appreciate any direction that you can give us as some type of a formal approval to form a committee. We would also appreciate some, I don't know if leeway's the word, but we have some people in mind that we would like to be involved in such a committee. That would include, you know, private individuals, but also city staff. And I think it would be appropriate for someone on the commission if they're interested as well.
I'd be, I'd be interested.
Do you have like a number in mind of how many people you'd like to?
No, no, we really don't. No. I think, you know, less than 10 would
Sure.
Come to my head, but no.
We'll, we'll talk about it, I think, during commission comments later, and we'll have David, likely have David bring you guys some, some direction from the, from the city commission.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Tune in on Facebook and watch when we get there.
We're just saying, it's a fun place to be. Is there anyone else who'd like to make public comment tonight? I can't hear you, Tabitha, if you're talking. Okay, there you go.
I'm Darren Schwent, 3515 West Towanda. I'm not sure, I was surprised that the place is not packed. Today is the day for talking about the increase in taxes. And either everybody has more disposable income than I do, or they don't, they're not getting taxed as much as I am, but.
Are you commenting on the budget?
Yes.
Okay, that public hearing will open after this. So we'll do that one here in a moment.
Oh, okay.
Public comments for?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Bill.
That's, that's okay. Hey, I appreciate you.
That is a scheduled item. I have to wait. Okay, I'm sorry.
And it's next. We're all.
Darren, Darren, thank you. Don't go too far, Darren. We're going to jump right into it.
Yeah.
So is there anyone else, Tabitha, for public comment? General public comment? I can't hear you, Tabitha, so if that's a no, then.
Sorry, you're good to go.
Okay. Now we're going to move on to our public hearings. We have, we're going to have two public hearings tonight. One is the public hearing concerning the city's intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. And then the second one will be the public hearing regarding the proposed 2025 budget of the city of El Dorado. So we're going to open the first public hearing now. This is a public hearing concerning the city's intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. And I would invite anyone in the public in the gallery that would like to make a comment, Darren, to come on up at this point and, and make your comments.
Sorry about that.
I need to exercise.
Formalities.
So anyways, I'm surprised again that not everybody's here, but, you know, everybody is asking for more money except for the state. Do I need to say my name again or get on that? Okay. So the total, just on one of my houses where I live, the total is $570. That is the maximum. I represent 30 houses here in El Dorado, so you can imagine what the total is going to be. I am really amazed at the rental houses, how much rent has gone up. Inflation, taxes, insurance is just killing the rental market. And I have to keep going up to cover all my bases. I mean, it just, and I know people get mad at landlords, like, what are you doing? Well, I'm not making any more money. I'm just covering all of my costs. And I'm not driving new vehicles. I had my oldest, or my newest vehicle was nine years old. So I feel like I'm living within my means, but I would like the city to do the same thing. And it's not just the city, but, you know, everybody's asking, and it's the old thing, death by a thousand cuts. And it's starting to bleed the taxpayer drive. Federal government is doing it. The state is not, because there's a huge surplus, but county is doing it, and the city is doing it. So I, I'm not proposing getting rid of government. That's called anarchy. Nobody wants that. But can we live within our means? That's what I'm concerned about. The other thing is, and I want to be very careful how I present this, because I have not looked at this in a while. I've just heard. So I'm going to relay something that I could be wrong at. But there is a disc golf course that my boys just love to play disc golf at. They don't come to El Dorado to play disc golf. They say it's too dangerous even for them. And one guy weighs over 200 pounds. He said that the homeless are there doing drugs and that kind of stuff. Maybe that has changed since they've been there. I don't know. I'm just relaying what I've heard. I would love to play disc golf here in El Dorado. It's a game we enjoy as a family. But if we as taxpayers can't go on property that we're paying because it's too dangerous, then something's wrong. And so an increase in taxes is not what the city needs, needs to enforce, laws that are already in place or should be in place for the taxpayer. That's just one example that I feel like the city could maybe improve if, again, if, that has not changed. We have not been there for a long time. So anyways, that's just kind of my comment of where we're at. And again, if we can all, the taxpayer can only tighten his belt so much, and it's just like, you know, I just wish the government could do the same thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
Thank you, Darren. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during this public hearing concerning the city's intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate?
One more person coming up.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is this about the property taxes? Okay. I'm Kara Ron. I was just, I guess I'm kind of confused about the property taxes in El Dorado. So don't we want our town to look nice? I feel like if you make your front yard look nice, your property taxes go up. Is that how it works? Because I mean, every time I do something, the appraisal comes by, and then everything goes up. Now I'm not doing anything else, but it's still going up. I don't know if I'm asking the right question. I've never been here.
So the city doesn't do the valuation on your property. That's something the county does. So that, they would probably be better to answer that question.
Okay.
They base it off a formula that's, somebody told me something about the state of Kansas. I saw this at a conference like two days ago or something. So they, they base it off of a formula they get, and, and that they're in complete control of that. The city doesn't have control over what your assessed valuation is.
But you have the right to appeal that evaluation.
Okay.
Through the, through the county.
Through the county, yeah, through the county.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, I want my front yard to look nice, but I feel like if I do that, it's just gonna, I mean, I know the value of the house will go up, but the proper tax goes up even if I'm not doing anything. So it's just every year when I pay my property taxes, it's high. And when I don't do anything, it still goes up. So I'm just, I'm confused about the whole thing.
I think we're all confused by that.
Yeah.
Just that's, we have that same issue. Like, we, yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's all, Bill.
I think that's all, Bill.
Okay, if there's no one else in the audience for a public hearing concerning the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, I'm gonna close that public hearing. And I'm gonna open a public hearing regarding the proposed twenty-twenty-five budget of the city of El Dorado. Is there anybody in the audience that has reviewed the budget and has commentary on the budget for the twenty-twenty-five fiscal year?
It does not appear so.
Okay. I'm gonna close that public hearing. In reference to the, some of the comments made, we're gonna talk through some of those as we get to the new, the new business agenda items later, so I appreciate the, I appreciate those that came to tonight's meeting for public comment, their public hearing. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we're considering approval of city commission work session minutes from August eighth, twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. City commission meeting minutes from September third, two thousand twenty-four. Approval of appropriation ordinance number zero eight dash two four in the amount of three million sixteen thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars. And the Rotary Club of El Dorado liquor resolution, drive a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda, it's Leon.
Second.
Kelly seconds.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Sound like motion carried five oh. We don't have anything on old business, so we're gonna move on to new business. And the first item, gen item number twelve on new business is consideration of a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
David, do you want me to do this?
Yeah.
City commission before you is a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate as required by state law. As the commission had already had staff adopt or publish its intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. State statute requires us to now adopt a resolution stating that we're going to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And what we are asking for is a mill levy of fifty-seven point nine two-two mils. The revenue neutral rate is fifty-five mils, so we will exceed the revenue neutral rate by about five, I'm sorry, two point nine mils. But that will be maintaining the mill levy at its current level of fifty-seven point nine two-two mils. In essence, the difference in taxation will be based upon the increase in assessed valuation as opposed to an increase in the mill levy. So, I don't take any questions. After this, we'll have our budget explained, the proposed work budget, and that may also help with that as well.
In your spreadsheet, is the first column the twenty-twenty-five?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Were you used to seeing it in?
Ready for motion, Bill?
I'm ready for motion.
I move to approve a resolution of the city of El Dorado, Kansas to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? So I've got a couple of things that I'd like to say. You know, the, the letters that went out, that everybody received about the proposed or potential taxation, those letters referenced the maximum amount that we could have raised this revenue neutral rate, raised the taxes to. So as David just mentioned, our, our mill levy is staying the same as last year, it does include a tax increase, and that, that increases the valuation, it, it is the valuation difference. So I just, to help everyone clarify, for clarification for everybody, I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that that letter that was, that was received about the revenue neutral rate increase included, included a kind of a maximum potential revenue, per revenue neutral rate increase. This, this is significantly lower than what that potential maximum was, David, if, if that's an accurate way to describe it.
That's correct, the original published intent to exceed was sixty-seven mils, and we are looking at fifty-seven point nine mils.
I think it's important that, that, you know, it's noted that we're staying the same as where we were. I mean, we are not increasing the mill levy, I think we did everything we could to stay at that. We raised more tax, but we did not increase our level.
We didn't raise the tax. The county raised the tax, we just stuck with the same mill levy.
There any other commentary or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, this is a roll call vote.
Oh, it's a resolution, sorry, a resolution. Tabitha, roll call please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Hedrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scribner?
Sorry about that. Yes.
Commissioner Leachman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion, motion passes. Gen item, gen item number thirteen, consideration of the proposed twenty-twenty-five budget for the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
What I'm gonna do today is I'm gonna provide a very quick overview of the proposed budget for the twenty-twenty-five budget year, which begins January first. Outlining very briefly the priorities of the commission as part of our work session discussions, retention and recruitment through competitive wages and benefits, preservation of public safety services at current levels, continued investment in critical public infrastructure, invest in parks and facilitate community events, and continue to save for future late debt payments. The capital projects that are planned for the twenty-twenty-five year include a critical facility generator at four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, Glenview lift station at a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, wastewater grinder pump at a hundred thousand dollars, Bella Vista Cemetery roads at a hundred thousand dollars, Rio and Legion Park planning at fifty-three thousand dollars, which could be some of the funding that you all decide to reallocate for pool, and then outdoor warning sirens at fifty thousand dollars. And then some initiatives that we're focusing on as part of this budget is focusing on facilitating residential development, marketing El Dorado's water capacity to industrial prospects, addressing vacant, abandoned, and blinded properties, and invest in beautification efforts along with major corridors and in downtown. So to get to the proposed mill levy, the value, the value of one mill increased to a hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars based upon the assessed valuation provided by Baller County Appraiser's Office. We get that in Jan, or I'm sorry, July, and then we use that to build our budget around. As has been mentioned here today, the county appraiser's office is responsible for determining the values of properties. The city then determines the mill levy to which taxes will be assessed at. And then those two combined, through some mathematical equation, determines the taxes that you pay on your property, or properties. Maintaining the mill levy at thirty, I'm sorry, fifty-seven point nine two-two mils, which is the same rate as last year, will generate an additional three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars from property taxes. Again, so your mill levy stays the same, but because valuations went up, you'll bring in additional taxes. The revenue neutral rate, the intent of that is if we were to stay at revenue neutral, the mill levy would go down to fifty-five mils, and that would bring in the same amount of revenue as the prior year. To explain that, as you can see on the slide, all of the mill levy funds are stacked up on top of each other. And as you can see, in twenty-twenty-four adopted, the twenty-twenty-five proposed is, is the same. The main difference is that our debt service mill levy was able to go down, primarily because we had some debt that was coming off of the insurance insured. And so we were able to reduce that mill levy and increase our general fund mill levy to make up some of the increased costs that we're experiencing with respect to operations. The library and airport also had some increases as well, but it's very small, because those, those funds are, are very small in comparison to the general fund. The next slide just shows a comparison of mill levies in communities throughout the state of Kansas that are generally our size. The red, the cities that are outlined in the red are cities that are within our immediate area, so for example, Andover, McPherson, Park City, El Dorado, of course, and Bel Air and Augusta. So that you can kind of see generally where we stand. Of course, comparing mill levies is only one tail of the tape, the other side of the tape is the assessed valuation for each of these communities, and then also the revenue sources that they have available for their general fund. So for example, many of these communities, their sales tax goes right into the general fund, whereas ours is, is broken up into different categories. And so we may have to have a slightly higher mill levy because of that, where some of these others can have a lower mill levy because they're bringing in sales tax that goes right into their operating budget. So now let's talk a little bit about the expenditure by authority, or, I'm sorry, expenditure authority by fund. The total proposed budget authority, which is the statutory limit, if you will, the spending limit that the city commission would approve with the, with the budget, is thirty-five point three four six million dollars. So if the budget is adopted as proposed, that would be the maximum amount of money that the city could spend for next year. However, that's broken down into different funds, so this slide here shows the mill levy funds, or the funds that are supported in part from the mill levy that we just talked about. The general fund would have a maximum budget authority of sixteen point four million dollars, debt service fund at two million dollars, library fund at seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, airport fund at five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, and the industrial mill levy at five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. It should be noted that all of these funds, well, all of our funds generally speaking, have a fund balance. And what we will be doing as an effort to keep our mill levy down, is we will be spinning down our fund balance as a mechanism to do that. And so we are absorbing some of our increased costs with our, our fund balance. And as you can see on this slide, it shows the fund balance for each of our mill levy funds, as well as the total amount of revenue that is included in each of those mill levy funds. In total, we have twenty point three million dollars of expenditures that will be attributed to a mill levy supported fund. And those make up about fifty-seven point six percent of the total operating budget of thirty-five million dollars. To further break down, the general fund on that prior slide is the biggest fund of the city. It's also the fund that most people would think about in terms of general government services. So when we think about things like police department, fire department, parks and recreation, those things are gonna come out of the general fund. So as we look a little bit closer into the general fund, we can see that we will be budgeting, or including in the budget, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for administration. That's gonna include things like expenses for some legal expenses, the commission's expenses. There'll also be some transfers that go from the general fund to our data processing fund to cover salaries that, that are organization-wide, so for example, the city manager's salary, assistant city manager and finance director's salary, human resources salaries. Those salaries service the entire organization, and so all of our operating funds contribute to those expenses. So the general fund, those transfers come out of the administration and go into the data processing fund. The engineering department's budget is a little over a million dollars. Law enforcement, which on this slide includes courts, is three point four million dollars. The fire department is two point one million dollars, parks and recreation is two point two, and that's gonna include the parks division, cemeteries, recreation, as well as the swimming pool, so that's all inclusive of parks and rec department. And then the public works department is one point five million dollars. This is gonna include refuse department, environmental services, and general public works, but then things like street maintenance is gonna come out of, the actual street maintenance dollars, it's gonna come out of sales tax dollars and other funds that we have for that. And then we have two point seven million dollars worth of transfers, and this is going to be various transfers that we make, most of which are attributed to our sales tax. So when we transfer, for example, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars into our excess sales tax fund, that's gonna be, we, we credit that into the general fund first, and then we transfer out to excess sales tax. We also transfer seven hundred thousand dollars for our street maintenance program, so that goes from the general fund to our streets, street sales tax fund. And we transfer, let's see, funds for the senior center, funds for economic development, things like that. So that comes out of the two point seven million dollars. And so that is your general fund, kind of at a very high level. Now, the remaining funds to make up the thirty-five point three million dollars worth of budget authority will comprise the water, sewer, refuse, major streets, so you can see them all on here. And what this slide does is it'll show you the revenues that we are budgeting for next year, as well as the expenditures for each of those funds. It also includes the fund balance that we're budgeting to have at the end of this year to carry over into next year. So for example, the water fund, revenues of four point eight million dollars, we're budgeting expenses of four point seven million dollars, and a carryover fund balance at the beginning of the year of three point five million dollars. The water fund makes up thirteen point three percent of the total, thirty-five point three million dollars worth of budget. One thing I will note about these slides is that all of the funds that are in green, if you note the revenues and expenditures on those funds, the revenues exceed expenditures, and so we are not budgeting to use fund balance on those, on those funds. Funds that are in yellow, however, like for example in this case, Experience El Dorado, revenues are less than expenditures, and that means that we are budgeting to spend down fund balance to make up that difference. And so that's why it's in yellow, so you're noting that. A few notes on this slide. Refuge department, we will have, we are projecting a fund, or I'm sorry, a revenue rate increase by the end of this year. Baller County recently let us know that those, our landfill fees will be going up. And so we, we did not know that for, except for a few weeks ago, so we'll be needing to come back and look at that. Because the refuse fund, as you can tell by the fund balance, does not have a lot of cash to absorb that increase, and so we'll be looking at that by the end of the year. The data processing fund, as I mentioned here, is the basically internal services fund, and that's where a lot of the, the services that affect the entire organization are paid from. And so, for example, your water, sewer, refuse, in general fund, pay into that fund, and then salaries are paid out of that, as well as information technology and human resources. We have the excess sales tax fund, which we will be budgeting to spend eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that fund. We currently have a balance of three hundred, I'm sorry, three point five million dollars. Our ordinance, street sales tax includes the increase of, or two seven hundred thousand dollars. In prior years, that was six hundred thousand dollars, but with the recent sales tax, that increased a hundred thousand dollars from six hundred thousand dollars. And so that will go up for next year as well. And then finally, Prairie Trails has its own fund, we don't own the, and operate the golf course, but this fund will capture the property tax payment that we make on behalf of the golf course, as well as the fifty thousand dollars in maintenance subsidy that we provide as part of the amended purchase agreement to Prairie Trails. The next slide is just a few of the other remaining funds, compressed natural gas, special alcohol, special parks and rec, and building demolition. The last fund on here, economic development sales tax, you can see it is zeroed out. It does have a fund balance of a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, but the sales tax that was recently passed did not include funds for economic development sales tax, and so there will not be a transfer into that fund for next year. All told, the total proposed budget authority with this budget is thirty-five point three four six million dollars. The mill levy will remain the same at fifty-seven point nine two-two mils, although everyone's property taxes will go up based upon their valuation on their property. So with that, I'll take any questions that you all may have.
Can you explain to the public why there is a balance in sales tax, so they understand how the sales tax program works?
Yes, so there is a balance in the sales tax fund, there are some projects that are outstanding that have not been paid in full, and so as those projects are paid, they will be paid from that fund balance, some of which, some of those projects will carry over into twenty-twenty-five. And then the way that program works is that we have sales tax, and then we take one point six five million dollars off of the top for property tax reduction. That's equal to approximately seventeen mils. So if we didn't have the one point six five million dollars that goes into the general fund, our mill levy would need to be seventeen mils higher to... higher to receive the same level of services. After that, we have seven hundred thousand dollars for street maintenance, which gets transferred out. And then the remainder is set aside for excess sales tax projects. The excess sales tax committee reviews projects that are submitted by staff, and they make a recommendation to the city commission, who then you all decide which projects ultimately get funded. Projects that are completed but didn't spend the total amount of money that was allocated, that money gets put back into that fund for future authorization on other projects in the future. So that's generally speaking how that process works.
Thank you.
Yep.
I move we propose that we approve the proposed 2025 budget for the city of Eldorado, Kansas.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? David and staff, I want to thank you guys for the work that you did in holding the budget and holding your expenses as well as you could. You know, I, I know it was tough. You guys brought some stuff to us early on that, that you guys pulled off the list because you knew of the importance of trying to keep expenses as low as we can. So thank you, David and staff, for the work that you guys did in preparing this budget. There's no other comments. Roll call, Tabitha.
This one doesn't require me.
My god, man.
I mean, you can.
No other comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number fourteen, consideration of an ordinance zoning certain land in the city of Eldorado, Kansas, R2 residential medium density district, and amending the zoning map of the city.
Bear with me just a second. Hold on a minute. Mayor and commissioners, the planning commission held a public hearing on August twenty-second to consider the rezoning of three nineteen South Taylor from R1 single-family residential district to R2 duplex residential district. The planning commission recommended approval to the city commission. The map, which is up on your screen this evening and included in your packet, shows the subject property. The owner of the property has the intent to construct two duplexes on that property. Currently today, there's three single-family older homes that he plans to demolish. A public hearing was held, included in your packet this evening is the message from that as well. If you have any questions, feel free to shoot them up.
What's the zoning across the street? What color is that considered on the map?
Thanks for pointing that out. The, the brown, just directly across the street, is R2. So what, they're requesting a rezone of that property to.
I think it's great.
Are you ready for a motion, Bill?
I am.
I move to approve an ordinance for case number twenty-four dash zero eight REZ, requesting a rezoning of three nineteen South Taylor to R2 residential medium density district.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As opposed, same sign, motion carries. David, is discussion items where we need to add the pool in, or should we just have one of the commissioners bring it up during commission updates?
I'd say you can bring it up now, in terms of discussion, that's fine.
Hi, Bill.
Hey, there is.
Welcome to the meeting.
Glad you could join.
And I've been here, been here the whole time. Okay. So do we want to talk about the question around the public-private, potential public-private partnership for the pool? That's our piece.
I think it sounds like a good idea. I would agree that we did an excellent job on the tennis courts, the pickleball courts and all that, and they're utilized greatly. I, I'm not quite sure what the reasoning behind the committee is going to be yet. I guess I, I know getting together with the city and getting together with community members who are wanting a better pool. I guess it's just kind of you form the committee and then find out what, the way it's going to go. As far as giving money, how much does it, does it take to do an RFP?
Well, the actual RFQ process is free, but it's when you hire the consultant to be doing work, that's when you get the cost. So I think we budgeted fifty-three thousand dollars to plan, make pool plans, not necessarily like engineered to construction, but going through a community engagement process to determine the design of the pool or a rough concept for the pool, and then vocations to look at different locations for what that might look like.
But the money we budgeted, what was what, fifty-three thousand?
From what show from the budget?
Was also for Rio and Legion Park. I'm concerned about spending the whole budget.
I thought it was.
It said both of them. I, I don't, I don't think it would take the full amount to, to do this, right? Like, but, but I think we need to get the process started.
Oh, I agree with that.
And so I think, I think what, if we, we make, you know, make whatever we have to do to move forward, I, I think we're just starting the initial conversations. And I think we would have to have a vote before we decide how much money, right?
Yeah.
And so I don't think we would be saying, hey, we're giving you fifty-three thousand bucks. And, and I think that there's private money that, that they're, they've already must have talked to people, or they wouldn't have presented it this way. So I think this is a very preliminary, like, let's get it out there and see what we need to do to at least start moving forward. Because you can't start the conversation until you start the conversation.
And I agree with that. And if it's going to be a dual effort, then there ought to be some splitting of the cost too, so.
Yeah. And, and we've talked about this pool, I don't even know how many times, for the whole time I've been here. And I assume before I was here, y'all talked about this. So it's one of those, we, we say every time, but it's not getting cheaper. And so we have to start the process sometime, so.
But when we do a city, a partnership with another group, are there certain guidelines, certain rules, certain ordinances or whatever that have to be followed? Or is it just like two different groups getting together and discussing?
Kind of like the stadium, the way it was put together? I mean.
Yeah. So like the most recent example is the test work project. And I guess not just rules, but policies. What we did was we tried to follow the most restricted policy in terms of the purchasing policy that, that had, but we negotiated through that and made it work. Because in that case, it was a school district in the city, and we don't have obviously the same person policies and processes. And so we had to kind of figure out who was going to, whose we were going to follow and how we were going to move that, move that forward. But we made it, we made that one work. It just takes discussion. In this case, though, I guess the question is, what, you know, does the city want to own the process? Or we want the private, you know, private interest to do that? Because we may not know what that looks like without, you know, in, in the case of school district, we can set up, we can negotiate with the entity. We know who that is. There, there's, there's an organization that we can say, okay, we're talking to the school district. In this case, it's just a group of people, and that.
Might not have the expertise.
We don't know what that really means at this point. So if it were me, I guess I would, I would own the RFQ process, hire the consultant as, as somebody that we would normally do, as, as a process we would normally do. And if they want, if they contribute, if you all want them to contribute, they can contribute to that bill, or pay a portion of that bill. But then we would own the process, and they could be part of that, of course. But then we can manage that and do all that, if that's what you want to do. But, so that's, I don't know if I answered your question.
David, I, I think, I mean, the, the tennis court is the most recent partnership example we have. But I, I think what we're looking at here is likely something closer to the stadium, in that we'll have public entities, the, the, the city, maybe the school district, I mean, you know, public entities, but also private entities like we had in, in the build of the stadium to help fund the project. And I think that's the value of the committee, Kendra, is, is the committee getting together and, and that committee helping to drive some of the private fundraising efforts that it might take to, to achieve, to achieve the end, the end result. I, I, I guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, if, if that's maybe the wrong way to look at it, but I, I think that that's kind of the intent. That's what it sounded to me like the intent was from Jeremy and Patrick when they came up and, and, you know, to present, was that there were some private individuals and some private entities that were interested in participating, not just from a planning perspective, but potentially from a funding perspective as well.
Yeah, that's the, that's the sense I'm getting as well, but those can run simultaneous or parallel to one another, if that makes any sense.
Yeah.
But I definitely think.
That would just, I don't.
Go ahead.
I don't, I don't disagree that, that driving RFQ process is something that we can take ownership of. But I think from, from a committee, a public perception standpoint, I think having a committee with, with private citizens, with a staff, a representative from, from the commission, with some staff members, is going to be beneficial in kind of the overall planning and envisioning process of this. So that's what I would advocate for.
Yeah, I think it shows the willingness of the city to move into that area, too. I mean, we're wanting to work together with them, because that's what it's going to take to make it go. Because that's an expensive project.
Well, I think each one of us has something to bring to the table. Where that, the RFQ process, we would be stronger at, where the private citizens would be a, a lot, it'd be, be easier for them to try to raise funds than if, you know, the city. So I think each side would bring something to that conversation. And so, but, but like David said, those can be done at the same time. Like, they absolutely don't need to be done separately, so.
I guess one thing to ask the commission is, do we want this to be a city committee, or do we want it to be a private committee that we have engagement with? Because that could be, how much ownership of the process do you want to have? Or do you want the private sector to take a lead on this and we just be a part of it? There's not a right or wrong answer. It's just a question that needs to be asked.
I like the, the private side with, with the representative from us and then some of the city staff. And then, you know, you grab members from each part. But I think it, I think it being a private committee would definitely be better than how, how we would do it like a city committee, I think. But that's my opinion.
I'd agree with that. I think, I think that if it's a private committee, I think they're, they're finding people that want to be engaged and they're already have, have an interest in the process, where, you know, we struggle as a commission, finding engaged committee members to, to serve on the committees and the councils and the boards and the advisory boards that we need help with. So I, if it were me, I'd let them drive it, as long as we've got representation, both from the commission and some representation that's necessary from staff.
Just to make sure that, not to beat the point, but if they have individuals that are interested, you can appoint them to the city committee. So when, I mean, you could do that, or you could just have them doing meetings that are not necessarily open to the public and, you know, those kind of things. So from, from a public standpoint, if it's a public, if it's a city committee, who follow Kansas meetings act, and the pub, you know, we would be able to report on those things. And obviously, we would, you know, do that as well. But to the extent that there's private interest involved, that may not be something that, you know, I mean, if you had five people that just met in a, in a restaurant downtown, that could create some, some difficult communication challenges. But if it was a city committee, it would be part of that open meetings act. So it's one of those things where they can recruit those folks, the commission can appoint it, and that creates the support that, that formal support that they were kind of talking about as they were making their presentation. Or you can just have them kind of run off and we give them the money and they hire consultants and go forth and own that process. So it just depends on how much involvement we want.
I like that way better.
Which way?
Your way.
I think you're going to get less involvement if you make it a city-run committee. And it just will. Regardless of, of how you want to look at it, that, that I think you will get less participation from some of the private people that we're wanting to have donations from. Right or wrong, that's what's going to happen.
Why do you feel that?
Well, just because we don't get the involvement now, like, like the excess sales tax. We had how many people that signed up and none of those people showed up. And so, but, but if you're getting a private committee that, that these people are kind of like a grassroots organization that's trying to raise funds, those people are going to be more than willing to help, but they're not going to want it to be something that's being managed and run by the city. So I, I, I guess I don't, I just don't see, the advantage is really either direction, other than it, it falls under the open meetings thing. That's the only thing that, that I could see people wanting to know. But when you get in a lot of those donations and stuff, people don't want that information out there. A lot of those want that to be anonymous.
Well, I, I see those, again, I see those two things in, in parallel. So the planning component of it is going to be over here, and they can fundraise, they can go talk to whoever they want over here. The city doesn't have to be involved in that process at all.
But the city still has to be involved when we're talking about money, though, how much money they've raised. I mean, that's, you know, that, and now they're not going to say who it's from, but we still have to know, hey, they raised a million dollars or whatever. And so.
Sure. To give you an example, the, the county did a process for their events. They owned the committee, it was their committee, they hired a consultant. The committee provided insight and expertise in terms of their event center planning. But then the committee was responsible for going out and getting people committed to fundraise. The county had no role in that. They basically said, here's the plan, we've done this, we've, we've consulted with you all, now go out and raise funds, and that's your job. And the county commission even said, before we put this on a sales tax ballot, you've got to go out and raise a certain point, or percentage of this privately, before we even consider that. So they basically said, okay, we've done, we've done what we're going to do, now we're going to call timeout, you go do your work, and when you're done, come talk to us, and then we'll put it in the ballot. And so that's, that's where that's stationed. So they can, they can operate in parallel where they can do that.
Right.
When's our next scheduled planning meeting?
Work session.
We have our work session, October second.
I guess I'd like to know where, you know, where, where the, the guys that came and spoke, where they would fall on, on the committee side, you know?
And talking to them about this before, in a meeting they asked me to attend, I don't think they necessarily care who's managing the RFQ process as much as they, they just want it to be moving down the track.
Sure.
So if it's the city, that's cool, and they'll have frequent meetings with us to make sure that it's on schedule. But if it's them, it's kind of the same, same approach. Their big priority is just to keep the trend moving down the track.
Well, I, I kind of feel like we're discussing things that maybe at this point don't need to be discussed for us to give them the, you know, blessing to go forward, right? And then that committee would hash out with representation from the city, saying this would be the city's preference, whatever, right? I think all they're asking for tonight is just our blessing to initiate this conversation in partnership with the city and their grassroots efforts. And the rest of it can be hashed out whenever that committee meets, right? It is when I'm, and we're worrying about things that maybe don't need to be decided tonight, is, is my take.
I agree. Uh, yeah. I think those details don't need to be decided tonight. We just need to make a decision whether we want to move forward or not.
So Bill, are you looking, or, or can we make a motion during the discussion side of things?
I mean, if David needs a motion now, we can make a motion now, or we can just give David direction to, to move forward. I think if we're going to make a motion to move forward with an RF, RFQ for planning of a, of a pool pros, project, potential planning of a pool project, then we probably need that motion so that David can start those wheels rolling. We also need to just then direct staff to, to get back in touch with, with Jeremy and Patrick and let them know that we're moving forward. We need to set up future meetings with their, you know, staff needs to set up future meetings with their committee. I think it would also be beneficial of us to decide who on the, on the city commission would be a representative in it moving forward in this project.
Well, would a consensus of the group serve as well as a motion, or?
That's a David question.
I think we're all in favor of it. Is that?
Well, it's fine with me. I just.
Well, I mean, I think we make a motion to vote on it, right? It'd be just like a normal, like a normal thing.
Whatever.
But, and as far as the representative, I, I would be interested if anybody else is, we, we could definitely talk about it. But I, it's something that I would definitely be interested in doing, so. It's whatever.
You wanted to add on to your library board responsibilities?
Yes. I love the library board, but, I mean, bless our hearts, we only meet every two months. So yes, that'd be great. bless our hearts, we only meet every two months. So yes, that'd be great. And I'm only here for a short time, so I'd like to do as much as I can.
Well, I'm willing to make a motion that we move forward with the... Help me with this, David. Do we just say that we want to move forward with the...
You want me to make it, Leon?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Make it easy.
I move that we authorize the representative commissioner Tetrick from the commission to work with the grassroots organization being formed by private citizens to start the planning process of what a pool might look like within the city.
I'll second that. Good job.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Before we vote? David, is that suitable for you to move forward?
Yeah, I'll make that work.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dean. We're going to move on to the city commission advisory board updates. We're going to smart start with Commissioner Tetrick.
I do actually have some stuff. We did have one of our meetings. It's fantastic. Their main fundraisers coming up, the Book and Bake Sales, the 25th through the 28th. Their Sloppy Joe Dinner, which is also fantastic, is October 25th. And then they have a couple like, I don't know what they're called, where they have the restaurants that partner with them, where part of their money goes to. They have KFC and Arby's this month, so if you eat at those places on certain dates, the money helps fund the Friends Over Library, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Scriber.
I think the only thing I have is, there's a job fair tomorrow at the Civic Center. Is that correct, Phil, from 10 to 2? So if that's anything that you need to attend, then that's going on downtown from 10 to 2 at the Civic Center. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Leachman.
Well, the Gold Fest was moving on. I think everybody's pretty excited about that, so we're looking forward to that. There's a Parks and Rec meeting on Wednesday, which I will be attending, so looking forward to it.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkinson.
We had an EFABC meeting on Wednesday. Had good comments from the coaches who have played on the new turf. Players think it's awesome. The coaches think it's awesome. Everybody thinks it's awesome.
They just need to win.
Oh, well. That's nothing I can do on the EFABC about that. Our main topic of discussion was signage on the scoreboard, an update on that, and some movement around of some of the sponsors of the scoreboard. And that was pretty much it.
So, thank you. Brief update from that. And so I would like to echo what you said about the coaches and the players. I've had an opportunity to visit with them. I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but I've had an opportunity to visit with the coaches. It is awesome, and it's awesome because the turf is conducive for playing with fewer injuries now. It's not as matted down and slick as it was. So it has been a game, it's been a game changer for health and safety, if nothing else, Leon, if they haven't won yet, but it's definitely been a game changer for health and safety. We do have signage getting ready to go up. The goal is to get the new signage on the scoreboard up prior to the Gold Fest game, which will be great. And after the meeting, Dr. Kroll let me know that she also sold one of the additional open spots. So I think we have two spots left that we could sell. And one of them is the big sign at the top where it now says Crossland. And the other one would be one of the mid-sized signs below it. So it's a, we've got those available and we're working on moving those as well. But the other sale that she was able to make after the meeting helped secure the rest of the money for the payments that we need on the, that they need on the turf. So we're good.
Good deal.
And that's all I've got. City managers' report.
We got responses back for our commercial real estate proposal that we went out for the other day. We received three submittals, so we'll be reviewing those and making a recommendation on the contract later soon. So that's, I guess, good news. The United States Army Corps of Engineers has invited the commission to attend a tour of the El Grande Lake Gate Tower at the lake. So we kind of looked at that and October 16 at 5:00 p.m., if that would work for you all, we can make that work. So that's the big structure over by the dam where we actually, you go down into it and they'll talk to us about how the system works to get us water and how the dam works and that sort of thing. So it would be pretty interesting.
What day of the week is that, David? What day of the week is that?
That is a Wednesday. We kind of looked at our next work session, I guess we have one on October 2nd. But the one after that, so we went after this and meet, just to be...
What'd you say the date was, 15th?
October 16 at 5:00 p.m.
At 5:00 p.m.
So if that would work for everybody, we will get that confirmed with them, and then we'll kind of figure out the logistics of that. So let me know if there's any...
Sounds good.
Any conflicts, and we will make that happen. The last thing on my list is, I was thinking about creating a housing task force to look at different strategies. The commission obviously has prioritized housing as one of its priorities. And there's a lot of things that we've talked about the other day for a number of times. And so getting a group of industry experts together to kind of talk about different strategies and then prioritizing those to make the biggest impact is kind of what the goal of that would look like. So trying to find, you know, trying to figure out who would be a good person to fit on that, but we could have a couple of names of people. So if you do have somebody that you think would be interested in that, let me know and I can reach out to them and get them some information on that.
What if we know somebody on the commission that also would serve that pretty well? Could she do that? I mean, if it's a she, I think... Like, would you want, like, I mean, I hate to volunteer her, but I think she would probably be pretty beneficial for that, you know?
Yeah, I'm...
And he's not talking about me, by the way.
Either one of you could do it, but like, one of you like definitely does that on a daily basis, so I definitely think that would be somebody you'd want to talk to, maybe, but...
Yeah, sure. That's perfectly fine. The idea is just to get strategies so that we can kind of put a more concrete to the housing conversation that we've been having, so we can come up with some stuff that you guys can then put more into it. So we're looking at about nine, seven, nine people.
To answer your question, yes.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
I've got a question before we close, Mike, if I could. His comment, Mike, about the frisbee golf, have you heard?
I'm glad you asked that question. Last week, me and two of our drone pilots went up to that area and specifically flew the disc golf course and the area around it, clear all the way down to the south end to Toaunda. And we only found one spot where we believe one person is staying. I have had a conversation with two of my officers today, and our intent is to go down there and address that individual tomorrow. I believe that the mayor may have gotten complaints, maybe even the city manager on these folks to the south of Sunflower. Apparently, they've been addressing employees or maybe even walking into the building there, so...
Oh, wow.
We are going to go down there and address that. But aside from that, we've had no other complaints of anybody on the disc golf course being confronted or bothered by homeless people or anybody else as of right now. So what I would say to that is, if that is happening, please let us know. Please reach out to the police department. Let us know that that's going on so that we can allocate those assets to deal with those problems.
Thank you for being so proactive.
Perfect use of the drone.
Yes.
That's fantastic.
Yeah. And I guess there are having some people on that tunnel again on 12th Street.
I did get worded that Friday, I believe it was, so we will readdress that as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Yeah, if there's nothing else, I'd consider a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Thanks, everybody. Thank you for your patience.
Hey, Bill, they stomped Independence Saturday.
Yes, they did.